रे हरे हरे कृष्णा धन्यवाद प्रणाम स्टोल डिगोटीज़ थैंक यू जॉइनिंग इन फॉर अवर बघवत गीता स्टडी सेशन दिस आफ्टरनून विल स्टार्ट विथ प्रेयर नमो महावधन्याय कृष्णा प्रेम प्रथायते कृष्णाय कृष्णा चैतन्य नाम ने गौर दुश्मन महा श्री चैतन्य मनो विष्टम स्थापितम ये ना भूतले स्वयं रूपा कदा मयं ददा अतीश्व पदांतिकम वंदे हम श्री गुरु श्री उत्पत्त कमलम श्री गुरुण वैष्णवाम श्चप श्री रूपम साग्रजातम सहनरुगुना कान्वितम तमस जीवम साधवेतम सावधूतम परिजना सहितम श्री कृष्णा चैतन्य देवम श्री राधा कृष्णा पादान सहनाललिता श्री विशाकान्वितम श्चप नमो मिष्णु पाठाया कृष्णा प्रेष्ठाय भूतले श्रीमते भक्ति वेदांत स्वामी निधिनामीने नमस्ते सरस्वते देवे गौरमाणी प्रचारिने निर्विशेष शून्यवादी अस्छत्य देश तारिने नमो महावधन्याय कृष्णा प्रेम प्रथायते कृष्णाय कृष्णा चैतन्य नाम ने गौर दुश्मन महा पंचतत्वात्मकम कृष्णम भक्त रूप स्वरूपकम भक्तावतारम भक्ताक्यम नमामी भक्त शक्तिकम ए कृष्णा करुणा सिंधो दीनवंदो जगतपते गोपीश गोपिका कांत राधा कांत नमो सुदे तप्तकांचन गौरंगी राधे वृंदावनी श्वरी विश्वभानु सुदे देवी प्रणमामी हरिप्रिय मांच कल्पत रूब्यस्चा प्रपास इंदू व्यवच्चा पतितानाम पावनीय भ्यो वैष्णवेभ्यो नमो नमो जय श्री कृष्णा चैतन्य ब्रह्मु नित्यनंदा श्री अध्वैद कदा आधार श्री बासादी गौर भक्त विंदा हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 राम हरे राम 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 हरे हरे गुरवे गौर चंद्राय राधिकाय तराले कृष्णाय कृष्णा भक्ताय तद भक्ताय नमो नमो मूकन करोति वाचालम पंगुम लंगय तेगिनीम यतक्रपातम हम्मंदे श्री गुरुण दीनतारिनम परमानंदमातवम श्री कृष्णा चैतन्य में शोरम हरि ओम तत्सत हरे कृष्णा सो वेलकम यू ऑल अगेन फॉर डी बघवत गीता स्टडी सेशन तुर्दे अब यू आर गोना कंटिन्यू विथ चैप्टर नंबर नाइन लाइक वी डिसकस डी लास्ट टाइम चैप्टर्स 7 तू 12 आर डी रियल ज्वेल ऑफ बघवत गीता डी मोस्ट इंपॉर्टेंट इंस्ट्रक्शंस ऑफ भक्ति योगा आर गिवन बाय लॉट्स श्री कृष्णा जस्ट लाइक इट्स एक्सप्लेन्ड बाय डी आचार्य आर हो डी फर्स्ट छह चैप्टर्स आर लाइक डी आर लाइक डी अपर लिड ऑफ दिस ज्वेल एंड डी लास्ट सिक्स चैप्टर्स 13 तू 18 आर डी लोअर लिड ऑफ डी ज्वेल एंड दिस रियल ज्वेल ऑफ बघवत गीता इस गिवन बाय लॉट्स श्री कृष्णा विच इस बिटवीन 7 एंड 12 ऑफ बघवत गीता 7 8 9 10 11 12 सो वी आर ऑलमोस्ट इनटू डी सेंटर मोस्ट ऑफ दिस ज्वेल राइट डेट इस व्हाई दिस चैप्टर इस एंटाइटल डी मोस्ट कॉन्फिडेंशियल नॉलेज वी स्टडीड डी फर्स्ट वर्स इन अवर प्रीवियस बघवत गीता सेशन इतम ते इतम तू ते गुयतमम प्रक्ष्याम अनसुयवे राइट डी वन क्वॉलिफिकेशन डी कृष्णा मेंशंस व्हाई ही चोस अर्जुना ओवर एनीबॉडी एल्स ही कुड़ हैव गिवन डी बघवत गीता ज्ञान तू एनीबॉडी राइट दुर्योगनाम सो में ये अदर सो में ये अदर कसंस सो तू से ऑफ कृष्णा वेयर देयर सो व्हाई डिड अर्जुना व्हाई डिड अर्जुना व्हाई अर्जुना वाज़ चोजन तू बी डी इंस्ट्रमेंट फॉर डी डिलीवरी ऑफ बघवत गीता राइट कृष्णा गिव्स डी आंसर तू दिस माय डियर अर्जुना बिकॉज़ यू आर नेवर एनिवियस ऑफ मी अनसुयवे मींस तू डी नॉन एनिवियस राइट सम्बरी हुज़ नॉट एनिवियस ओन्ली डेट पर्सन कैन अंडरस्टैंड डी बघवत गीता अदरवाइस वी कैन स्टडी बघवत गीता फॉर मिलियंस ऑफ लाइफटाइम्स फॉर मिलियंस ऑफ ईयर्स बट वी कनॉट अंडरस्टैंड डी बघवत गीता बिकॉज़ बघवत गीता कैन बी अंडरस्टूड नॉट बाय अवर मटेरियल इंटेलिजेंस नॉट बाय मेंटल स्पेकुलेशन नॉट बाय फिलॉसफिकल स्पेकुलेशन बट हो इट कैन बी अंडरस्टूड इस अलसो गिवन बाय कृष्णा ही टेल्स इन 10.11 ऑफ डी बघवत गीता ही से स्तेषम एवानु कम्पार्तम अहम नज्ञान जम्तमहा आई डिस्ट्रॉय डी इग्नोरेंस एंड डी हार्ट्स ऑफ डोज़ हु इंगेज इन माय सर्विस राइट एंड नेंड व्हाट इसे ही से स्तेषम एवानु कम्पार्तमहम नज्ञान जम्तमहा नाशयाम आत्मभाविष्टो ज्ञान दीपेन वास्वतः राइट कृष्णा से आई लाइट डी लैंप ऑफ ट्रांसेंटल नॉलेज इन डी हार्ट्स ऑफ डोज़ डिगोटीज़ हु ऑलवेज इंगेज इन माय डिगोर्शनल सर्विस हु डराइव प्लेजर इन टॉकिंग अबाउट मी इन डिसकसिंग माय पास्ट टाइम्स आई एक्चुअली रिमूव डी डार्कनेस ऑफ इग्नोरेंस फ्रॉम डेयर हार्ट्स एंड नेंड ज्ञान दीपेन वास्वतः डेट व्हाट इस अलसो स्टेटेड हियर ज्ञान विज्ञान सहितम दिस कॉन्फिडेंशियल नॉलेज एंड रिलाइजेशन विल बी रिवील्ड इन डी हार्ट्स ऑफ डोज़ पीपल हु आर नॉट एनिवियस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड राइट इफ वी सरनर्ड तू डी लॉर्ड वी विल नॉट बी एनिवियस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड बट इफ वी आर एनिवियस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड डेट मींस वी आर इन कंपटीशन तू डी लॉर्ड एंड व्हाई वुड डी लॉर्ड वांट तू रिवील हिमसेल्फ तू सच अपरसेन राइट योगमाया समावर्त आह कृष्णा से इन बघवत गीता तू डोज़ पीपल हु आर एनिवियस हु आर हुडॉट एक्सेप्ट डी लॉर्ड तू बी डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड तू डोज़ पीपल डी लॉर्ड कवर्स हिमसेल्फ बाय हिस योगमाया राइट एंड डी फर्स्ट वर्स प्रौपद वेरी ब्यूटीफुली डिस्क्राइब्स डी वर्ड्स अनसुयवे राइट ही से डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड रिवील्स हिमसेल्फ ओन्ली तू डोज़ हु आर नॉट एनिवियस ऑफ हिम वन हु क्रिटिसाइज तू डी कैरक्टर ऑफ कृष्णा इस अन फूल राइट एंड सच पीपल हु क्रिटिसाइज डी लॉर्ड और हिस डिगोटीज़ वी हैव तू अलसो वेरी केयरफुली अवॉइड सच पीपल बिकॉज़ वी विल अलसो डेवलप राइट संगत का असर राइट साधु संग लाइक हाउ इन नेक्रम इंस्ट्रक्शन अलसो रुपगुस्वामी से जन संगस्चल लोलियम चर शतप्रिय भक्तिर विनश्वती इफ वी असोसिएट विथ डोज़ पीपल हु आर डी मटेरियलिस्टिक कॉन्शनेस हु आर एनिवियस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड हु आर एनिवियस ऑफ अदर पीपल दें व्हाट इसे दें डोज़ काइंड्स ऑफ मेंटालिटी कुड़ अलसो कम ऑन तू अस इफ वी टेक डेयर असोसिएशन इफ वी स्पेंड टाइम विथ डेम सो अरे डिगोटी हु वाज़ वेरी ईगर तू गो बैक होम बैक तू गॉड हेड हु वाज़ ईगर तू अटेन डी डिजायर डिस्टिनेशन ऑफ कृष्णा प्रेमा शुड केयरफुली अवॉइड डोज़ पीपल हु आर एनिवियस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड और एनिवियस ऑफ हिस डिगोटीज़ राइट डेट इस व्हाई कृष्णा इस पेसिफिकली टेलिंग अर्जुना हियर आई एम एक्सप्लेनिंग दिस कॉन्फिडेंशियल नॉलेज डी मोस्ट कॉन्फिडेंशियल नॉलेज हो वाज़ डी कॉन्फिडेंशियल डी रसो में नी कमेंटरीज़ ऑन डी बघवत गीता बट यू आर नॉट एबल तू अंडरस्टैंड डी एसेंस ऑफ बघवत गीता इट इस लाइक प्रौपद एक्सप्लेन इन वन लेक्चर लिकिंग डी बॉटल ऑफ हनी बट डी बॉटल इस टाइटली क्लोज्ड इस नॉट अवेलेबल फॉर पीपल हु आर एनिवियस सो यू नो दें में बी सो में नी पीपल हु में ट्राई तू स्टडी डी बघवत गीता ही आर डी बघवत गीता बट आस लॉन्ग आस वी डोंट हियर फ्रॉम अन बोनाफिट अथॉरिटी हु आर कमिंग इन वन ऑफ डी फोर बोनाफिट परंपरा वी विल तू सिंपली बी लिकिंग डी आउटसाइड ऑफ डी बॉटल वी विल नेवर बी एबल तू टेस्ट डी हनी ऑफ बघवत गीता सो तद्विदी प्रणिपातेन परी प्रश्नेन सेवया उपदेख शंती दे ज्ञानम ज्ञानिनस तत्व दर्शिन आह राइट कृष्णा रिवील्स हिमसेल्फ थ्रू हिस प्योर डिगोटीज़ राइट एंड इन दिस वे वी रेंटरिंग सर्विस तू सच डिगोटीज़ हु कम इन अन बोनाफिट गुरु परंपरा वी आर एबल तू अंडरस्टैंड डी नेक्टरियन नॉलेज ऑफ बघवत गीता एंड वी आर एबल तू अप्लाई इट इन अवर लाइफ सो डेट इस डी एसेंस ऑफ डी फर्स्ट वर्स सो लेट्स मूव ऑन तू डी सेकंड वर्स राइट दिस दिस चैप्टर इन इट्सेल्फ इस राजविद्या राइट एंड राजगुयम वेरी वेरी दिस इस डी किंग ऑफ एजुकेशन राइट दे से गुया गुयतमम एंड गुयतमम राइट गुया गुया ज्ञान इस गिवन बाय कृष्णा इन डी सेकंड चैप्टर राइट यू आर नॉट दिस बॉडी यू आर डी स्पिरिट सोल दीरस तत्रणम यति वन डूज़ नॉट लामेंट डी लॉस ऑफ अन बॉडी बिकॉज़ एनीवन हु वाज़ बोन हाज़ तू डाय एंड एनीवन हु डाइज़ विल बी रिबोन अकॉर्डिंग तू डी डिजायर्स वन इस कल्टिवेटेड इन वन्स माइंड राइट सो डेट इस गुया ज्ञान डेट इन इट्सेल्फ इस कॉन्फिडेंशियल में नी पीपल डोंट अंडरस्टैंड डेट अलसो बट डेट अलसो वी नीड डी मर्सी ऑफ गुरु ओन्ली बाय डी मर्सी ऑफ गुरु वी कैन अंडरस्टैंड दिस ट्रांसेंटल सब्जेक्ट मैटर्स एंड दें व्हाट इसे दिस दिस इस गुया दिस इस गुयतमा व्हाट इसे दिस गुयतमा गुयतमा मींस दिस इस मोर कॉन्फिडेंशियल व्हाट इसे दिस मोर कॉन्फिडेंशियल नॉलेज डेट प्रत्यक्य अव्रम धर्मयम सुसुकम कर्तुम व्ययम वी नीड तू अंडरस्टैंड अवर संबंध ज्ञान अभिदेव ज्ञान एंड प्रयोजन ज्ञान राइट डी कृष्णा इस डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड राइट फर्स्ट यू अंडरस्टैंड आई एम अन स्पिरिट सोल दें यू अंडरस्टैंड डी आई एम अन पार्ट एंड पासल ऑफ कृष्णा राइट आई एम डी सर्वेंट ऑफ कृष्णा कृष्णा इस डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड आई शुड इंगेज इन डिगोर्शनल सर्विस एंड गुयतमम डेट कम्स इन चैप्टर नाइन एंड अगेन इट कम्स इन चैप्टर नंबर 18 वेयर कृष्णा कंटिन्यूसली रिपीट्स इट मन मन भाव मत भक्तो मत याजी मां नमस्कृत मां में वैश्विक सत्यम ते प्रति जाने प्रयोसी में राइट दें कृष्णा गिव्स डी प्रयोजन ज्ञान व्हाट इसे डेट डू ऑल दिस थिंग्स बिकम माय डिगोटी ऑलवेज रिमेंबर मी एंड दें ऑफर योर ओवेज आंसर्स ऑन तू मी फिक्स योर माइंड अपऑन मी इन दिस वे यू वी कम बैक तू मी विथाउट फेल दिस इस व्हाट कृष्णा प्रॉमिस इन डी नाइंथ वर्स इन डी नाइंथ चैप्टर आस वेल आस इन डी 18th चैप्टर ऑफ डी बघवत गीता सो दिस ज्ञान अक्चुअली एस्टैब्लिश अवर रिलेशनशिप विथ डी सुप्रीम लॉर्ड हु एम आई हु इस डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड व्हाट इसे डेट आई हैव तू डू तू गेट आउट ऑफ डीज़ थ्री मोड्स ऑफ मटेरियल निचर राइट प्रौपद एक्सप्लेन इन वन लेक्चर हाउ सर्विस इस सर्विस फॉर डी सोल इस लाइक स्वीटनेस इस तू सुगर राइट वन कनॉट सेपरेट सुगर फ्रॉम डी स्वीटनेस राइट व्हेन वी से सुगर मींस समथिंग इस मेड स्वीट बाय ऐडिंग सुगर इसेंट इट सो सिमिलरली डी आर डी नॉन सेपरेबल प्रॉपर्टी ऑफ सुगर इस स्वीटनेस सिमिलरली डी नॉन सेपरेबल प्रॉपर्टी ऑफ डी सोल ऑफ डी जीवा ऑफ डी लिविंग एंटिटीज तू सर्व बट वी हैव डी फ्री विल वेदर वी वांट तू सर्व डी लॉर्ड और वी वांट तू सर्व डोज़ पीपल हु आर एनिवियस डोज़ पीपल हु आर नॉट कनेक्शन विथ डी लॉर्ड डोज़ पीपल हु नॉट येत एस्टैब्लिश डेयर कनेक्शन विथ लॉर्ड राइट एवरीबॉडी इस इनरेंटली डी डिगोटी ऑफ डी लॉर्ड राइट वी विल बीन क्रेटेड बाय डी लॉर्ड बट समहाव वी डिसाइडेड तू इंजॉय इंडिपेंडेंटली एंड वी आर स्ट्रगलिंग इन दिस वर्ल्ड सो वी शुड नो हुस संग वी शुड टेक सो डी वी कैन रिअवेकन डेट लव फॉर डी सुप्रीम पर्सनैलिटी ऑफ गॉड हेड एंड हुस संग वी शुड अवॉइड एस्पेशली डोज़ माया वादीज़ एस्पेशली डोज़ हु आर एनिवियस ऑफ डी लॉर्ड एस्पेशली डोज़ हु आर हु क्रिटिसाइज डी लॉर्ड एस्पेशली डोज़ हु क्रिटिसाइज डी डिगोटीज़ सच काइंड ऑफ असोसिएशन वी शुड ट्राई तू अवॉइड सो दें वी कैन अंडरस्टैंड डी ट्रांसेंटल नॉलेज ऑफ बघवत गीता सो डेट इस डी पर्पस राइट वी आर स्पेंडिंग सो मच ऑफ टाइम एंड एनर्जी सो वी वांट तू वी वांट तू अंडरस्टैंड बघवत गीता डेट व्हाय वी आर वी आर स्पेंडिंग एवरी डे राइट या और एवरी वीक डे मंडे तू फ्राइडे राइट तू अंडरस्टैंड डी बघवत गीता तू अंडरस्टैंड व्हाट आर डी टीचिंग्स ऑफ लॉट्स चैतन्य महाप्रभु व्हाय आर वी डूइंग डेट बिकॉज़ वी वांट तू अंडरस्टैंड वी वांट तू अप्लाई इट इन अवर लाइफ एंड वी वांट तू अटेन कृष्णा प्रेमा सो व्हाटएवर इस कमिंग आस डी ऑब्सटिकल तू दिस गोल ऑफ कृष्णा प्रेमा वी शुड केयरफुली ट्राई तू अवॉइड राइट अनुकूल्यस्य संकल्प प्रतिकूल्यस्य वर्जन राइट व्हाट वी अवॉइड व्हाटएवर इस अनफेवरेबल तू अवर अटेनिंग ऑफ डी डिजायर्स सक्सेस ऑफ कृष्णा प्रेमा एंड वी एक्सेप्ट विथ बोथ आर्म्स एवरी ओपरचुनिटी एवरी एवरी ओपरचुनिटी या आई थिंक ओपरचुनिटी इस डी बेस्ट वर्ड एवरी ओपरचुनिटी तू परफॉर्म डिगोर्शनल सर्विस बिकॉज़ डेट विल हेल्प अस अंडरस्टैंड कृष्णा कॉन्शनेस हेल्प अस अंडरस्टैंड कृष्णा एंड प्रोग्रेस इन डिगोर्शनल सर्विस अरे सो लेट्स क्विकली मूव ऑन तू टेक्स्ट नंबर तू ऑफ चैप्टर नंबर नाइन ऑफ डी बघवत गीता सो दिस दिस इस अलसो गोना डी चैप्टर इट्सेल्फ इस इट स्टार्ट्स विथ गुया दें गुयतमा एंड गुयतमम 9.34 टॉक्स अबाउट डी गुयतमम ज्ञान डी लास्ट वर्स ऑफ डी चैप्टर अक्चुअली गिव्स डी गुयतमम ज्ञान व्हाट इसे डेट इस वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट फॉर अस ओके आई कैन सी राजनीति प्रभुस हैंड अप यस प्रभु प्लीज गो हैंड एंड रीड टेक्स्ट नंबर तू ऑफ डी बघवत गीता चैप्टर नंबर नाइन
हरे कृष्णा मता जी धन्यवाद प्रणाम
हरे कृष्णा
राजविद्या राजगुयम विस्त्र मिदु मुत्पम प्रत्यक्ष तमत तर्पिय राजविद्या डी किंग ऑफ एजुकेशन राजगुयम डी किंग ऑफ कॉन्फिडेंशियल नॉलेज वित्रम डी फ्यूरियस इतम दिस उत्तम ट्रांसेंटल प्रत्यक्षा बाय डायरेक्ट एक्सपीरियंस आवगमन अंडरस्टूड धर्मयम वन डी प्रिंसिपल ऑफ रिलिजन तू सुखम वेरी हैप्पी कर्तम तू एक्जिक्यूट अव्ययम एवरलास्टिंग ट्रांसलेशन दिस नॉलेज इस डी किंग ऑफ एजुकेशन डी मोस्ट सीक्रेट ऑफ ऑल सीक्रेट्स इट इस डी प्यूरेस्ट नॉलेज एंड बिकॉज़ इट गिव्स डायरेक्ट परसेप्शन ऑफ डी सेल्फ वाइ रिलाइजेशन इट इस डी परफेक्शन ऑफ रिलिजन इट इस एवरलास्टिंग एंड इट इस जॉयफुली परफॉर्म डी चैप्टर ऑफ दिस चैप्टर ऑफ बघवत गीता इस डी किंग ऑफ एजुकेशन बिकॉज़ इट इस डी एसेंस ऑफ ऑल टॉप राइज एंड फिलॉसफिकल एक्सप्लेन विथ फॉर अमांग डी प्रिंसिपल फिलॉसफोर्स इन इंडिया आर गौतमा अंडा नपिला जजन वालक्य शांधिल्य एंड व्यश व्यश वनारा एंड फाइनली देयर इस व्यशुदेवा व्यशदेव डी अथर ऑफ वेदांक सुत्र तो देयर इस नो डॉट ऑफ नॉलेज इन डी फील्ड ऑफ फिलॉसफिक एंड ट्रांसेंटल नॉलेज नॉट डी लॉर्ड से डेट इस नाइंथ चैप्टर इस डी किंग ऑफ ऑल सच नॉलेज डी एसेंस ऑफ ऑल डी नॉलेज डेट कैन बी डराइव फ्रॉम स्टडी ऑफ वेदाज़ एंड डिफरेंट काइंड्स ऑफ फिलॉसफिक इट इस डी मोस्ट कॉन्फिडेंशियल बिकॉज़ कॉन्फिडेंशियल और ट्रांसेंटल नॉलेज इनवॉल्व अंडरस्टैंडिंग डी डिफरेंस बिटवीन सोल एंड डी बॉडी एंड डी किंग ऑफ डी ऑल कॉन्फिडेंशियल नॉलेज कल्युनेट्स डी डिगोर्शनल सर्विस जनरली पीपल आर नॉट एजुकेटेड इन दिस कॉन्फिडेंशियल नॉलेज वी आर एजुकेटेड इन एक्सटर्नल नॉलेज आस वेल आस ओरिडनरी एजुकेशन इस कंसर्न पीपल आर इंवॉल्व विथ सो में नी डिपार्मेंट्स पॉलिटिक्स सोशियोलॉजी फिजिक्स केमिस्ट्री मैथमेटिक्स अस्ट्रोनॉमी इंजीनियरिंग एसेट्रा वी देयर आर सो में नी डिपार्मेंट्स ऑफ नॉलेज ऑल ओवर डी वर्ल्ड एंड में नी ह्यूज यूनिवर्सिटी बट देयर इस यूनिफॉर्मिटी ये देयर इस ये देयर इस नो यूनिवर्सिटी और एजुकेशन एजुकेशनल इस्टीज यू कैन वेयर डी साइंस ऑफ डी स्पिरिट्स रोल इस इंस्ट्रक्टेड येट डी सोल इस डी मोस्ट इंपॉर्टेंट पार्ट ऑफ डी बॉडी विदाउट डी प्रेजेंस ऑफ बॉडी डी बॉडी आर नो वैल्यू टिल पीपल आर प्लेसिंग ग्रेट सर्टेस्ट ऑफ डी बॉडी डिजिटल प्रेजेंट ऑफ लाइफ नॉट केयरिंग फॉर वायरल सो बघवत गीता एस्पेशली फ्रॉम डी सेकंड चैप्टर ऑन सर्टेस्ट इस डी इंपॉर्टेंस ऑफ डी सोल इन डी वेरी बिगनिंग डी लॉर्ड से डेट दिस बॉडी इस परिशेवल एंड डेट डी सोल इस नॉट परिशेवल अतावत देहा नित्य सुक्य करीन्य दिस इस कॉन्फिडेंशियल पार्ट ऑफ डी नॉलेज सिंपली नोइंग डेट स्पिरिट्स सोल इस डी इस डिफरेंट फ्रॉम डी बॉडी एंड डेट इस निचर इस इनफिटेबल इंट्रस्टेबल एंड इटर्नल बट डेट गिव्स नो पॉजिटिव इनफॉरमेशन अबाउट डी सोल समट्राइज पीपल आर अंडर डी इंप्रेशन डेट डी सोल इस डिफरेंट फ्रॉम डी बॉडी एंड डेट व्हेन बॉडी इस फिनिश्ड और वन इस लिबरेटेड फ्रॉम डी बॉडी डी सोल रिमेस्ट इन ए वाइट एंड बिकम्स इंपर्सनल बट एक्चुअली डेट इस नॉट डी फैक्ट हो कैन डी सोल विच इस सो एक्टिव विच इस डी बॉडी विद इस विद इन दिस बॉडी बी इनएक्टिव आफ्टर बीइंग लिबरेटेड फ्रॉम डी बॉडी इट इस ऑलवेज एक्टिव इफ इट इस इटर्नल दें इट इस इटर्नली एक्टिव एंड इट्स एक्टिविटीज इन डी स्पिरिचुअल किंगडम आर डी मोस्ट कॉन्फिडेंशियल पार्ट ऑफ पर्सुल नॉलेज दिस एक्टिविटीज ऑफ डी स्पिरिट्स सोल आर देयरफुल इंटेक्टेड डी इंटेक्टेड हियर आस कॉस्टिट्यूटिंग डी किंग ऑफ नॉलेज डी मोस्ट कॉन्फिडेंशियल पार्ट ऑफ ऑल नॉलेज दिस नॉलेज इस डी प्यूरेस्ट फॉर्म ऑफ ऑल एक्टिविटीज आस एक्सप्लेन्ड इन वृत्तिक न्यूट्रिशन
To the body, all of the possessions of the body are not going to give me happiness because I am not this body. So that is first level knowledge. Second level knowledge is, who am I then? If I am not this body and I am the soul, then what is it, right? What is the soul? Right, the soul is a, is a part and parcel of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. Um, Jivira Swarupahay, Krishna Nityadha. Right, that understanding now is, um, is the, uh, is the second level of knowledge, which is more confidential. However, becoming the devotee of the Lord, always remembering the Lord, right? Engaging in devotional service, that is the most confidential knowledge, right? So in this way, um, the, uh, Guya, Guya Tama, Guya Tamam, right? They are actually described in the, uh, in Bhagavad Gita itself by Lord Shri Krishna himself, right? And then, um, in this particular verse, very beautifully, what is given is, um, Susukam Kartumavyayam, right? What does that mean? Susukam Kartumavyayam, right? We are engaging in activities using our body only, right? Because if the body is not there, I'm, I definitely, I'm saying that I am not this body. So I should not give importance to the body. But then, this body is so very important. If not for this body, how are we going to engage in devotional service, right? So, this body is very important, but we should understand that the soul is more important. It is not that we don't take care of the body. We do take care of the body. We offer Boga to the Lord and have Krishna Prasadam. So we energize ourselves to make our body fit to perform devotional service, right? But we should also understand that when the, when the soul, when the spirit soul leaves the body, then Prabhupada says here, right? That, uh, uh, that, uh, you know, one becomes, one perfects one's life means what? That means we are in this body because we've committed some sins. And when we come out in a, and in a, in a, reach a particular position where we don't commit any more sins, then what happens? Then the soul does not take up material body, which is perfect understanding, it is correct. But the soul takes a spiritual body. That understanding is missing, right? The half-understanding is there. And then what does the, what do they, what do they think? That when I perfect, I will become impersonal because the body is subject to so much of miseries. And when I perfect my life, I will be, uh, I will be, um, transcendental to these miseries, which is perfect. But then, it is, it is, we are still at zero degree. That means we, na sho chadi, na kaam chadi, Brahma Bhuta prasannatma, na sho chadi, na kaam chadi. We are in zero degree, zero axis, right? If you mark it on a, you know, graph, we are in zero. That means no, no more further suffering because we have understood that I am the spirit soul and whatever activities I do, it is, it is causing trouble only to my body, but I am not this body. So very nice, so we are in zero. But zero does not give us pleasure, right? Only when there is some positive access, then only it gives us some pleasure. And that positive access can be obtained only by devotional service. That's what Prabhupada is telling here. When the, uh, when the, right? We are all Anandamayu Abhyasad. Why do we perform activities? Right, it's not that we are bored and we just want to simply jump, right? We don't be, that means a whole day we'll be doing something, but what are we planning? We are planning to make, uh, you know, to get a better job. Why? Because we think it will give us, it will give us more money. Why we want more money? Because it will give us happiness, right? Every activity if we analyze, every activity that we perform, right from morning till we go to sleep at night, are some ways or the ways that we think will give us happiness. But then, what are we doing? Sometimes we, uh, we perform some sinful activities in order to get something. You know, we try to go, you know, we, we find a back route to actually, you know, get that particular job or, now get that particular promotion or get that particular, uh, whatever we want, right? We go the back route and then what happens? We perform sinful activities. And then, again and again, we are, we are pushing ourselves backwards, right? To get a, we are pushing ourselves backwards means we are not, we are not evolving in our consciousness. We are going backward, right? So when we study Bhagavad Gita, then we understand that we should not be performing all these sinful activities because it leads us for destination that is worse than what is my present destination. Very nice. But then, we also find, right? Arjuna also asks, right? I am propelled to perform sinful actions also, although I don't want to perform them, right? So what is the cause, right? Krishna already explained it, uh, in the earlier chapters of Bhagavad Gita. Krishna said, it is kama esha kro deesha, rojo guna samut bava. It is lust only, Arjuna. It is making you perform some activities which you also don't want to do because you are, because you've studied the Shastras. You don't want to do sinful activities. But then what is happening? I am propelled, I am compelled to perform certain sinful activities. Why is it so? Because of lust, right? Lust, uh, lust means inappropriate desires, right? So when we study the Bhagavad Gita, we take a resolution, okay? I am not going to perform any sinful action. And then what happens? When we are determined like that, then, but also due to our conditioning, we do perform some sinful actions. Then what does Krishna say? Chipram Bhagavidharma Atma, Shashvich Chantimni Gachchati, Kantiya Prithijani, Namie Bhakti Pranachati. Krishna is giving us assurance because of your previous conditioning. Even if you perform some sinful activity, yet I will give you more opportunities for performing devotional service, provided you are sincere. And then it comes to our free will. You know, the good dog and the bad dog, we've been discussing so long, right? So many sessions we have discussed, right? Every opportunity that presents itself to us, right? If we choose sense gratification, we are making it more and more difficult for us to take a proper choice. Of course, Krishna is so merciful. Krishna is giving us empty opportunities. If we fail the first standard, then what is it? Again, we have the opportunity to write the next year. If we fail, again, we have an opportunity. If we pass, then do their, do our tests come to an end? No, we still have our second standard, then we have the third standard, then the fourth standard. Like that, tests are continuously there until we perfect our life. But then, one hopeful, uh, uh, point that Prabhupada is mentioning in this purport is that, we are hopeful because although we know we've committed sinful activities, now we know we should not commit, but then because of our past, uh, past conditioning, we are still propelled to perform sinful activities. But then, when we take a conscious decision using our free will, no, I am not going to do it. Then Krishna makes note of it, right? And then Krishna helps us that we continue to make positive decisions. We continue to make decisions that take us closer to Krishna. And we continue to make such decisions. And what happens? It becomes a way of life for us, right? So for, so many of us, I put twenty devotees, I regularly join us for the Brahman Murtha chanting session in the morning, right? Because Krishna is giving us that taste of chanting in the association of devotees. Otherwise, how can we get up every day in the morning? It is not possible. But somehow Krishna is seeing our determination. Krishna is giving us the taste how it is beneficial for us. And we are understanding that it is beneficial for us. And then we are continuously endeavoring, right? Although we cannot say that, oh, I have so much taste in chanting, then I can continue chanting the whole day, right? We want to chant, we want to chant, mat chittam, matkata, prana, bodhi, anta, paraspram. We want to do it twenty-four hours a day. Krishna has told us, that is the level that we have to reach, right? We have that desire, but unfortunately, due to our pa- past conditioning, we are not able to do it twenty-four hours a day. But then, when we exhibit our sincerity, when we show our sincerity to the Lord, every day I want to wake up in the Brahman Murtha time, which means I sleep early, which means I have my dinner early. How am I planning? The entire twenty-four hours a day I am planning. Why? Because I want to do this two hours of exclusive chanting in the morning. Why? Because it pleases the Lord, right? When we doubt tell all of our, plan all of our day's activities to ensure that we perform what pleases the Lord, what pleases Guru and Goranga, then automatically we are, uh, we are placing ourselves in a position where we make the right choices, right? We are placing ourselves in a position where we are receiving the mercy of the Lord. And that is where we want to be. We want to make the right choices. So how do we make the right choices? By planning our day in such a way that we are able to make those choices by the mercy of Guru and Goranga. That's, that's, that's about it. So we don't have to worry, oh, why is it that I did a mistake? Oh, why did I not wake up today? Oh, how could I do this sinful activity? How could I think like this? How can I mind not focus on chanting, right? We have brought about baggage of so many lifetimes, right? Yes, we are trying now, but we have to sincerely depend on the mercy of Lord. And every time we have a free will, we have to tell ourselves, this is the opportunity for me to express my sincerity to the Lord. The choice that I am making now is going to determine my future destination, my immediate next destination, right? So that's how we need to motivate ourselves to choose Krishna and say no to Maya every time we have an opportunity. All right. So let's ask Shobha Mathaji to go ahead and read the next three, four paragraphs. And then we'll have one more, uh, devotee, uh, Sudha Mathaji can read the concluding part of this purport. Yes, go ahead, Mathaji.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dandodh Pranam. Uh, I should read, continue reading this, right?
Yeah, I have explained in the twenty eighth, perfect, yeah.
In the twenty-eighth verse of the second chapter, a person who has completely entered the reactions of all sinful activities and who is to be engaged in fire activities, being freed from the duality of this material world, becomes engaged in devotion service to the Supreme Personality of Godhead Krishna. In other words, those who are actually engaged in the devotion service of Supreme Lord are already freed from all reactions. This statement is confirmed in the Padma Purana. Can you read, Mathaji?
Yeah. Abraaridha falam paapam, kootam, bijjam, falon mukham, kramenai va pralleyeta, vishnu bhaktira kaatmanam.
For those who are engaged in the devotion service of Supreme Personality of Godhead, all self-full reactions, whether fruitified in the stalk, fruit, fructified in the stalk or in the form of seed gradually vanish. Therefore, the purifying potency of devotion service is very strong and it is called Pavitra Utthamam, the purest. Utthamam means transcendental. Tamas means this material world or darkness. And utthama means that which is transcendent to material activities. The devotional activities are never to be considered material. Although sometimes it appears that devotees are engaged just like ordinary men. One who can see and is familiar with devotion service did now that, will know that they are not material activities. They are all ritual and devotional, uncontaminated by the material modes of nature. It is said that the execution of devotion service is so foresight that one can perceive the results directly. This direct result is actually perceived and we have practical experience that any person who is chanting the holy name of Krishna, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hare Krishna, Hare Rama, Hare Rama, Amrana, Hare Rama. In case of chanting without offense, feels some transcendence, the pleasure and then he becomes purified of all material contamination. This is actually seen. Furthermore, if one engages not only in hearing but by crying of, at, trying to broadcast the message of devotional activities as well, or if he engages himself in helping the missionary activities of Krishna consciousness, he gradually feels spiritual progress. This advancement in spiritual life does not depend on any kind of previous education or qualification. This method itself is so pure that by simply, simply engaging him, one becomes pure. In the Vedanta Sutra, not if, no cause, second chapter, first hand though, this is also described in the following verse, Prakashastha Karmani Abhyasat. Devotional service is so potent, potent that since the engaging that produces devotion service, one becomes enlightened without a doubt. A practical example of this can be seen in the previous life of Narada, who is, who in that life happened to be the son of a maid servant. He had no education nor was. He born in a, into a high, high family, but when his mother was engaged in serving great devotees, Narada also became, became engaged. And sometimes, in the absence of his mother, he would serve the great devotees himself. Narada first Mulese, utchistalepam, anumodito, vidja jidaiha, sak, sakritsama, bhundhe, tathapastha, kitisaha, eva ampravastasya, visutha, tekasa, dhatarma, eva, eva atma, ruchit, kaja, yate, disphers, shrimad bhakwatham, kontikas, shambhukshlo, pravastik, khando, fastak, Narada describes his previous life to be to his disciple Yasdeva. He says that while engaged as a boy servant, for those purified devotees during the four months of their stay, he was intimately associated with them. Sometimes, those sages left remembrance of food on their dishes. And the boy who would wash their dishes wanted to taste their remembrance. So he answered their devotees for their permission. And then they gave, it gave it, Narada ate those remembrance and consequently became freed from all sinful actions. As he went on, he came, he gradually became so pure-hearted as his teachers. The great devotees relished a taste of unseeing devotion service to the Lord by hearing, chanting, and Narada gradually developed the same taste.
I agree, thank you, Mathaji.
Yeah, Mathaji, very good, thank you.
Thank you. This is very, very beautiful, right? Uh, this is a practical, um, explanation of how devotional service can elevate one from the lowest level to the highest level of, uh, Krishna prema, right? We know, we all know Narada Muni. Before Narada Muni became Narada Muni, right? Narada the boy, this is a life history of Narada the boy, from the first candor, Shiva Bhagavatam, wherein he was born as a, as the son of a Sudrani, right? There, there's no reference to the name of Narada the boy's mother in the entire Bhagavatam. But simply because Narada's mother, right? Who was, who was not known at all, right? Was not known by anybody, right? She was just simply engaged in, uh, serving the Bhakti Vedantists, who had, who had stayed in her place for the four months of Chaturmasya, right? It is going to start soon now, um, from July, Chaturmasya is going to start. So the four months of rainy season, when it starts, right? That time the Sanyasi and the Bhakti Vedantists, they don't travel. Otherwise, Parivirjika Charias, they keep traveling from one place to another, giving this knowledge to others. But then, uh, during these four months, right? When they stayed in Narada the boy's home, the mother was engaged in devotional service. And then, the son was also engaged in devotional service of these Bhakti Vedantists. And then what happened as a result of the association, right? He got the taste for devotional service, right? Not only did he serve them, he also took their permission and took their utchista, right? Um, bhaktapada duuliara, bhaktapada jalaa, bhakta bhukta avasheshya, tina mahabala, tina mahabala. That means there are three things that can give us so much strength in our devotional service. What are those tina mahabala? Bhaktapada dhuli, right? The dust of the lotus feet of a pure devotee. Bhaktapada dhuliara, bhaktapada jalaa, the water that has washed the lotus feet of pure devotees. Hmm, bhakta bhukta avasheshya, that means the prasadam or the remnants of the prasadam that is honored by a pure devotee of the Lord. These three things, if we get the fortune, we should grab with both hands. The dust of the lotus feet of a pure devotee, the, the water that has washed the lotus feet of a pure devotee, as well as the, the remnants of the prasadam that's honored by a pure devotee of the Lord, right? These three things are great strengths. They give great strength for us to persevere and make the right choices in our progress in Krishna consciousness, right? And one more thing is, susukam kartumavyayam, right? We, we see here that it's very joyfully performed, right? And again, the word dharma is there, right? In this verse also, like we, uh, like we discussed, the dharma of sugar is sweetness. The dharma of the soul is to serve. So again, here it says, pratiksha vagamamam dharmiyam, susukam kartumavyayam. Again, dharma is the word here. So, the way we execute our dharma, if we execute our dharma in service to the Lord, then such dharma will give us susukam. But if we engage, uh, our, the performance of our duties in satisfying our senses, then it will lead to dukkha, right? Activity is the same, that's what Prabhupada is saying here. The activity is the same, whether it is of a devotee or of a person who's not yet realized that he is a part and parcel of the Lord. The activity is the same. We all get up in the morning, we all, uh, prepare our, we prepare food, we all go to office, we all come back home, we all take care of our children, we all take care of our family, we all relax, we all require recreation, we all require work, we all require activity to mediate our body, everything is the same. We all go to sleep at night. There is no difference, if we see the activities, it is the same. But then, what is the consciousness with which I am performing those activities? If I am performing those activities for the pleasure of the Lord, for the cultivation of my Krishna consciousness, for the evolution of my soul, then I will land myself in a better destination where I can continue to practice. Susukam kartumavyayam, pratiksha vagamamam dharmiyam, susukam kartumavyayam, joyfully performed and at the same time landing ourselves in better destination, right? That means currently I am better situated and I am also going to be situated but in a better position in the future. So in this way, I want to perform devotional service, right? Then Narada says further, what does he say? Let's read, uh, Sudha Mathaji, you can go ahead. Narada says further.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dandodh Pranam. Narada says further, tatran vaham, krishnakata, pragaya tam, anugrahena, shrnavam, manohara, tasrathaya me, anupadam, vishanvata, priya shavasi, angamama, bhavadruji. Though, by associating with the sages, Narada got the taste for hearing and chanting the glories of the Lord and he developed a great desire for devotional service. Therefore, as described in the Vedanta Sutra, prakashascha karmani abhyasat. If one is engaged simply in the acts of devotional service, everything is revealed to him automatically and he can understand. This is called pratiksha, directly perceived. The word dharmiyam means the path of religion. Narada was actually a son of a maid servant. He had no opportunity to go to school. He was simply assisting his mother and fortunately, his mother rendered some service to the devotees. The child Narada also got the opportunity and simply by association achieved the highest goal of all religion. The highest goal of all religion is devotional service as stated in Shrimad Bhagavatam, savay pumsam paro dharmayato bhaktira dogshati. Religious people generally do not know that the highest perfection of religion is the attainment of devotional service. As we have already discussed in regard to the last verse of chapter eight, vedeshu yajneeshu tapashu chaiwa, generally, Vedic knowledge is required for self-realization. But here, although Narada never went to the school of the spiritual master and was not educated in the Vedic principles, he acquired the highest results of Vedic study. This process is so potent that even without performing the religious process regularly, one can be raised to the highest perfection. How is this possible? This is also confirmed in Vedic literature, acharya van, purusho vedha. One who is in association with great acharyas, even if he is not educated or has never studied the Vedas, can become familiar with all the knowledge necessary for realization. The process of devotional service is a very happy one, susukam. Why? Devotional service consists of shlavam, keertanam, vishnu. So one can simply hear the chanting of the glories of the Lord or can attend lost lectures on transcendental knowledge given by authorized acharyas. Simply by sitting, one can learn, then one can eat the remnants of the food offered to God, nice, tangible dishes. In every state, devotional service is joyful. One can execute devotional service even in the most poverty-stricken condition. The Lord says, patram pushpam phalam toyam, is ready to accept from the devotee any kind of offering, never mind what, even a leaf, a flower, a bit of fruit or a little water, which are all available in every part of the world, can be offered by any person regardless of social position and will be accepted if offered with love. There are many instances in history, simply by tasting the tulisi leaves offered to the lotus feet of the Lord, great sages like Sanak Pumara became great devotees. Therefore, the devotional process is very nice and it can be executed in a happy mood. God accepts only the love with which things are offered to him. It is said here that this devotional service is eternally existing. It is not as the Mayawadi philosophers claim, although they sometimes take to so-called devotional service. The idea is that as long as they are not liberated, they will continue their devotional service. But at the end, when they become liberated, they will become one with God. Such temporary time-serving devotional service is not accepted as pure devotional service. Actual devotional service continues even after liberation. When the devotee goes to the spiritual planet in the kingdom of God, he is also engaged there in serving the Supreme Lord. He does not.
Very good, thank you, Mathaji.
Thank you, Mathaji.
Very good. So here, very beautiful, right? Uh, by our, by our own mental speculation, philosophical speculation, we cannot understand Krishna, right? That Narada the boy, Prabhupada is explaining here, Narada did not go to school. He did not even have material knowledge, right? He could not read anything, right? We are all reading Bhagavad Gita, right? Prabhupada has given us in English, that's why we are also able to read Bhagavad Gita, right? But when we are reading Bhagavad Gita, does not mean we are understanding Bhagavad Gita, right? When we are reading, it only means that we are capable of, we are literate, right? Because we can read letters, right? But how to understand the actual purport? The actual purport is understood by the blessing of, uh, senior devotees, by the blessing of Guru and Goranga. So that's why here, Narada Muni, Narada the boy, he could understand the glory of the Lord. He got the great desire for devotional service, not because he studied Bhagavad Gita. Not because, because he could not even read anything. He could not go to the school, could not even read or write his own name, right? But then, everything was revealed to him in his heart because he rendered service to the Bhakti Vedantists. Right, simply by serving them and taking their remnants after taking their permission, right? He simply attained the bhava of devotional service. So, um, Prabhupada also says, in the, in the last chapter, in the, in the previous chapter, chapter number, vedeshu yajneeshu tapasuchaiwa, is it necessary? Why are we studying Bhagavad Gita now? Simply we can understand, we can simply engage in devotional service. No, why? Because Vedic knowledge is required for self-realization. But we should understand that all of this knowledge is useless labor if we don't engage in the devotional service of the Lord. All of this jnana, right? Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita, um, what is that? Sarvasya cha ham, manitisalni vishto, matasmitir jnana apohanamcha, vedeshu sarve, ameva vedyo. Your study of the Vedas should result in you wanting to serve me, Krishna says. If that is not where you arrive at, at the end of the study of Bhagavad Gita, then the entire study of Bhagavad Gita is ishrama eva hi kevalam. It is useless labor. If we don't arrive at the right destination, then all of the effort that we take, right? Uh, it becomes useless labor. In this material world though, it becomes zero. There is no use for that particular effort. But if you are engaging in proper devotional service, uh, under the guidance of a bona fide guru, even though we may not attain the Krishna prema, which is the desired success, whatever, whatever path we have covered in the path of devotional service, ah, nehavikramana shusti, pratya vayana vidyate, there is no law for diminution in this path, provided we are taking the right path of devotional service. And it is also joyfully performed, right? And it does not require any amount of artificial jnana or it does not require any mental speculation, does not require uh, any, uh, academic knowledge, right? But it is a susukam kartumavyayam, right? Uh, so I am just recollecting this beautiful pastime when Chaitanya Mahaprabhu goes for the South India Yatra. He sees a Brahmana, he is actually holding the Bhagavad Gita upside down and he is crying profusely. And then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu is asking this person, why are you crying? And, um, and then this person is saying, um, I, I, you know, I know, first and foremost, Chaitanya Mahaprabhu asks, why are you holding the Bhagavad Gita upside down? And then he tells that I am not, I, I cannot read the Bhagavad Gita, but simply my spiritual master has told me that to read the Bhagavad Gita, so I am just trying to understand the Bhagavad Gita. And then, um, and then Chaitanya Mahaprabhu asks, okay, you cannot understand the Bhagavad Gita, you cannot read the Bhagavad Gita, but you are following instructions of a guru, that's perfectly okay. But why are you crying? You cannot understand anything, you are not reading anything. Why are you crying? And then, this person tells Chaitanya Mahaprabhu that when I see the picture, right? Where Krishna has become the Partha Sarthi, he's become the Sarthi for Partha or the son of Pritha or Kunti Devi's son, um, Partha. Ah, he's become the chariot driver for his own devotee. He is the Supreme Personality of Godhead, right? He has become the charitier for his own devotee. When I see this picture, right? Tears flowed on from my eyes, thinking of the magnanimity of the Supreme Personality of Godhead, who agrees to become the charitier for his own devotee, right? In this material world, have you ever seen, uh, any, uh, you know, the CEO of the company becoming the driver of his driver? Because the driver is requesting him, right? Never, never have you ever seen. We will say that the CEO has become mad, we will, you know, put him in the mental hospital. Even if the CEO comes some, sometimes, right? And we've seen, even, even today, in this age, we've seen Krishna Chandraprabhu, right? Krishna Chandraprabhu is the, uh, CEO of the, uh, Mafatlal Group of Industries, right? When he comes to the temple, and so many of his, uh, employees also come to the, uh, come to the temple on Sunday feast. And we can see that the CEO of the company, actually, uh, Dr., you know, Mr. Rishi Keish Mafatlal, who is Krishna Chandraprabhu, he also dances in the kirtan along with so many of other employees of his own company who also come for the Sunday feast, right? This is possible only when one has this transcendental consciousness, only when one practices devotional service. Outside, the, you know, the people who are practicing devotional service, we cannot see this, right? We cannot see, we cannot say that we never seen, right? We have seen and devotees have also expressed this in the class, right? How Krishna Chandraprabhu is dancing with his own employees in the organization. And that time, the relationship is not employer and employee. The relationship is, we are all devotees of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. And that is the consciousness we want to build, we want to develop. And we can see, it is not, we are not talking about five thousand years back, when Krishna became the charitier of his devotee. We are talking about today's day and time, right? Krishna Chandraprabhu simply lives in Mumbai only. Every day he goes to office, Sundays he goes to the temple and this is practically possible, we are seeing. That is why it is saying, pratiksha vagamamam dharmiyam, we can see it in practice, even in today's day and time, how devotees, they don't see these bodily differences, they don't see these positional differences. When they come to the temple, they are simply engaged in the service of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. They simply dance for the pleasure of the Lord. They, they forget all their external identifications that they, uh, that they have, hmm, in, in the temple, like that, right? So, susukam kartumavyayam, and we can see, pratiksha vagamamam dharmiyam, susukam kartu, avyayam, like that. Okay, so, uh, let's continue, uh, this is the last paragraph of the purport, but I just wanted to discuss this. Uh, maybe Deva Mathaji, you can read the last paragraph and also continue with the next verse. Yes, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dandodh Pranam. As will be seen in Bhagavad Gita, actual devotional service begins after liberation. After one is liberated, when one is situated in the Brahman position, Brahma Bhuta, one's devotional service begins. Sama sarveshu bhuteshu, man bhaktim labate param. No one can understand the Supreme Personality of Godhead by executing karma yoga, jnana yoga, ashtanga yoga or any other yoga independently. By these yogic methods, one may make a little progress towards bhakti yoga. But without coming to the stage of devotional service, one cannot understand what is the personality of Godhead. In the Shrimad Bhagavatam, it is also confirmed that when, when one becomes purified by executing the process of devotional service, especially by hearing Shrimad Bhagavatam or Bhagavad Gita from civilized souls, then he can understand the science of Krishna or the science of God. Evam prasannam manaso bhagvat bhakti yogataha. When one's heart is clear of all nonsense, then one can understand what God is. Thus, the process of devotional service of Krishna consciousness is the king of all education. Thus, the process of devotional service of Krishna consciousness is the king of all education and the king of all confidential knowledge. It is the purest form of religion and it can be executed joyfully without difficulty, therefore one. Should adopt it. Hare Krishna.
Verse number three, but here I just want to make, make an important point here. Right? We are all working for becoming prasanna or becoming happy. Bhagavad Bhakti Yogataha, what can give us that prasanna atma? Right? The prasanna can be attained only by Bhagavad Bhakti Yogataha. And what can this do? The Bhagavad Bhakti Yogataha not only gives us, gives us prasanna manasa in our present life. But mukta sangasya jaite, it can take us to that point of mukti. To be situated in our constitutional position as the servant of the Lord and getting opportunities to serve the Lord. And being engaged in the service of the Lord, that is, that is only exact mukti. Not, not that impersonal liberation where you go and merge with the Brahman, because even there you fall down. So, that is not eternal bliss, eternal bliss is in devotional service, when we render devotional service under the supreme personality of Godhead. Okay, let's quickly move on, text number three, okay, Devil Mathaji, go ahead.
Synonyms, ashraddhana, those who are faithless, purushaha, such persons, dharmasya, towards the process of religion. Ashyadis, parantapa, oh killer of the enemies, aprapya, without obtaining, maam, me. Nirvartanti, comeback, mrti of death, sansara, in a material existence, vartmani, on the path. Translation and purport by his divine grace, Shri La Prabhat, Shri La Prabhat Ki Jai. Those who are not faithful in this devotional service cannot attain me, oh conquer of enemies. Therefore, they return to the path of death, murt and death in this material world, purport. The faithless cannot accomplish this process of devotional service, that is the purport of this verse. Faith is created by association with devotees. Unfortunate people, even after hearing all the evidence of vedic literature from great personalities, still have no faith in God. They are hesitant and cannot stay fixed in the devotional service of the Lord. Thus, faith is the most important factor for progress in Krishna consciousness. In the Chaitanya Charita Amrita, it is said that faith is a complete conviction that simply by serving the supreme lord, Shri Krishna. One can achieve all perfection, that is called real faith. As stated in the Shrimad Bhagavatam, fourth candle thirty-first chapter, fourteenth verse. By giving water to the root of a tree, one satisfies its branches, twigs and leaves and supplying, by supplying food to the stomach. One satisfies all the senses of the body. Similarly, by engaging in the transcendental service of the supreme lord, one automatically satisfies all the divine gods and all other living entities. Therefore, after reading Bhagavad Gita, one should promptly come to the conclusion of Bhagavad Gita. One should give up all other engagements and adopt the service of the supreme lord, Krishna, the personality of Godhead. If one is convinced of this philosophy of life, that is faith.
So, so in this particular verse, right? We, we always discuss this example, right? Right from the second chapter, we've discussed this verse, now we've discussed this analogy of how. Just like when we water the root of a tree, automatically its branches, it's, you know, the flowers, the fruits, the. The stem, the trunk, all of them get nourished. Similarly, if we, if we, if we simply satisfy our stomach, right? They have nice palatable prasadam and then we get, the entire body gets energized, right? The other day we were talking about how, you know, the hand wants to keep the gulab jamun in the hand only, it does not want to put in the mouth, the mouth does not want to swallow. The tongue wants to release the taste, does not want to swallow. Then after a particular point in time, either want to spit or swallow, right? We cannot, we don't have control. We cannot hold the gulab jamun in our hand, for you know, after a particular point, it starts stinking, it starts, you know, it becomes sticky. Even if you want to hold, you cannot hold. So, similarly, the hand, they cannot enjoy the way it wants to enjoy. But the hand also will be nourished, if it just puts the gulab jamun in the mouth, that allows the tongue to enjoy. The tongue enjoys the taste and then, you know, it goes into the stomach. So, every part of the, every angas is also enjoying, it's not that the angas are, you know, they're doing something which will cause them so much trouble, no. All the angas are also enjoying, but they ultimately know that the stomach has to be fed the food. Then, then, you know, the whole body will be nourished. So, similarly, when we, when we try to enjoy independently of the Lord, then it becomes a problem. But when we dovetail our senses in the service of the Lord, if I like to dance, I dance for the pleasure of the Lord. If I like to sing, I sing for the pleasure of the Lord, I sing nice vajnavajans. If I am an intellectual person, I study, you know, the science of civilization book, the Bhagavad Gita, the Bhagavatam, the Chaitanya Charita Amrit, I understand. The technical, because it's the greatest spiritual science, I try to understand these matters from a logical perspective, I try to explain it to others. I use my intelligence in this way, dovetail it in the service of the Lord, then what happens? I am also enjoying because I have this propensity to do certain things and I'm doing it for the pleasure of the Lord. I'm doing it to propagate the message of the Lord and then what happens? I please the Lord and then what happens? I also advance in devotional service and I also derive bliss, right? Because the, because the Lord is pleased, all the parts and parcels are also pleased, I am also pleased because the Lord is also pleased. And this is the real intelligent way of acquiring pleasure or seeking pleasure. Rather than seeking pleasure for individual parts, just like it is so ridiculous. For the hand to enjoy independently by holding the gulab jamun, right? We all understand that, it's such a ridiculous thing to do. But then we are also doing the same thing when it comes to our relationship with the supreme personality of Godhead, we are parts and parcels. So, we should not try to enjoy independently, rather we should engage in the service of the Lord, work for the pleasure of the Lord and in that lies our enjoyment also. Yeah, so let's go ahead. Okay, there's one more paragraph, okay, pretty long paragraph. Okay, so let's read this paragraph and then we will read a text number four, the same person can do that. Let me share my screen. There will be text number three, last paragraph of the purport. Devil Mathaji already finished, Sindhu Mathaji, go ahead, last paragraph of purport number. Now, the development of that faith is a process of Krishna consciousness, there are three divisions of Krishna conscious men. In the third class, there are those who don't. Yes, go ahead.
The development of that faith is the process of Krishna consciousness. There are three divisions of Krishna conscious men. And the third class are those who have no faith, even if they are officially engaged in devotional service, they cannot achieve the highest. Perfection, perfectional stage, most probably they will slip after some time. They may be, they may become engaged, but because they haven't complete conviction and faith, it is very difficult for them to continue in Krishna consciousness. We have practical experience with charging our missionary activity, that some people come and apply themselves to Krishna consciousness with some hidden motive. And as soon as they are economically a little well situated, they give up this process and take to their old ways again. It is only by faith that one can advance in Krishna consciousness. As far as the development of faith is concerned, one who is well-burst in the literatures of devotional service. And has attained the state of firm faith is called a first-class person in Krishna consciousness. And the second class are those who are not very advanced in understanding the devotional scriptures, but who automatically have firm faith that Krishna Bhakti or service to Krishna. Is the best course and so in good faith have taken up. Thus, they are superior to the third class who have neither perfect knowledge of the scriptures nor good faith, but by association and simplicity are trying to follow. The third-class person in Krishna consciousness may fall down, but when one is in the second class, he does not fall down. And for the first-class person in Krishna consciousness, there is no chance of falling down. One in the first class would surely make progress and achieve the result at the end. As far as the third-class person in Krishna consciousness is concerned, although he has faith in the conviction that devotional service to Krishna is very good. He has not yet gained adequate knowledge of Krishna through the scriptures like Shrimad Bhagavatam and Bhagavad Gita. Sometimes, these third-class persons in Krishna consciousness have some tendency towards karma yoga and jnana yoga and sometimes they are disturbed. But as soon as the infection of karma yoga or jnana yoga is vanquished, they become second class of first-class persons in Krishna consciousness. Faith in Krishna is also divided into three stages and described in Shrimad Bhagavatam. First-class attachment, second-class attachment and third-class attachment are also explained in Shrimad Bhagavatam in the eleventh candle. Those who have no faith, even after hearing about Krishna and the excellence of devotional service, who think that it is simply theology. Find the path very difficult, even if they are supposedly engaged in devotional service. For them, there is very little hope of gaining perfection, thus faith is very important in the discharge of devotional service.
Yeah, so we also see the Nekro instruction where Rupa Goswami also mentions. Shraddha Anusari, according to the faith that a person has, one is classified into a kanishtha adhikari, madhyama adhikari or an uttama adhikari. Right? So, when a person is kanishtha adhikari, that means he has got faith in the Lord, he believes in the Lord, that is why adhikari word is there. Adhikari means you have the right, you have the, you know, you get the right, the Lord gives us the right to perform devotional service. Right? When we go to the temple and take darshan of the Lord, that is also devotional service. Right? When we take darshan of the Lord, when we offer obeisances to the Lord, we cannot do all of that without the mercy of the Lord. When we are able to do all of that, we should understand that we have the mercy of the Lord, that is why adhikari, that word is there, right? Kanishtha adhikari, he has faith in the Lord, he offers obeisances to the Lord, but he, his faith is not so much backed up by vedic scriptures. It does not have the jnana that Krishna is the supreme lord, whatever may happen, I will never give up my devotional service, when somebody else comes and tells. Ari, why are you, you are suffering so much, you are worshipping Krishna, how can the Lord you worship is not protecting you? And then, you know, his faith becomes shallow, right? Becomes, his faith is already comal, it starts shaking. Oh, the Lord is putting me into trouble, right? He does not understand that my own past karma is actually coming in front of me by giving me all these troubles. But Krishna is actually protecting me by giving me just, just a token of the amount of suffering that I'm actually eligible. Or I'm actually, you know, actually required to suffer, if I'm required to suffer a mountain. Then Krishna, because I'm practicing devotional service, Krishna is giving me just a mole hill of the amount of suffering that I'm actually eligible. In that way, devotee understands that this is also the mercy of the Lord, right? Does not understand this, he becomes, oh yeah, Krishna is not protecting me and his faith becomes shaken. So, that is a person with very low faith, shraddha anusari like that. And then the second level is madhyama adhikari, madhyama adhikari, he, he understands, right? That, oh yeah, he, like the four things, we've already discussed in at length in a Nekro of Instruction, so we're not going to the details. Right? He understands his faith is very strong because his, his, his knowledge of the scriptures are also very strong. He has this understanding, whatever happens, happens by the mercy of the Lord and come what may, I will never give up my, give up my devotional service. And uttama adhikari also, we know that such a person actually comes down to the level of madhyama adhikari for the purpose of preaching. Because at uttama adhikari level, he's got all the knowledge, he's got all the faith, but he thinks that everybody else is a better devotee than me. And such a person, you know, how will he preach? He will only be lamenting, right? He'll be crying tears of ecstasy or tears of lamentation that I am so fallen, I am so fallen. But such a person is of the highest order, right? He's in uttama adhikari. But then such uttama adhikaris like Prabhupada, they come down to the level of madhyama adhikaris, right? And they teach people, they scold people because there is so much compassion in their heart, that they come down to the level of madhyama adhikari. Giving up their ecstasies, giving up their, their, their bhavas that they have with the supreme lord and they engage in this process of preaching. Because of their compassion, they engage people, conditioned souls to, to bring them to the path of devotional service. So, in our, in our practice of devotional service also, we need to also ensure that. We have the, we are strong in Krishna consciousness, our faith has to become strong, whatever level we are in, right? We need to become strong so that we can preach the message of Krishna consciousness. Our faith should not be broken because someone else tells, you know, certain things are happening to us. Oh, because of, you know, how can, how can the Lord bring you to such a situation? And then you should be able to convince them, or even if you are not able to convince them, we at least can need to bring us, bring ourselves to that level. And whatever Krishna does is good for me, avishya rakshabe, Krishna, raki krishne, maare ke, maare krishne, raki ke. Even if you cannot convince somebody, you should direct that person to a senior devotee who can convince that person. We ourselves are not able to convince, but at least we should be strong enough to tell that person that whatever is happening is happening because of. My previous karma and whatever is happening is happening by the mercy of Lord Shri Krishna and is for my benefit. At least that much we should have the faith and we should direct that person to a person who can help that person understand further. That is the, that is the level of consciousness of a devotee, a practicing devotee who has, who is at the madhyama level, right? Text number four, okay, I have lost Sindhu Mathaji, anyways, okay, so let's go ahead, Karpa Gavli Mathaji, go ahead, text number four.
Mayatatum idam sarva. Jagat abhye tmu tina, ma amat stani sarva bhudaani, na na cha ham. Avastitaha, sinanams, ma maya baimi, tatam.
Ah, Mathaji, it is maya, baimi, you know, if you see the meaning, no, it is not maya, maya is energy of the Lord, but here Lord is referring to himself as maya.
Maya, maya, maya baimi, tatam, spread, idam, all these manifestations. Sartham, all jagat cosmic manifestation, abhye tmu tina, unmanifested form. Mat stani, antumi, sarva bhudaani, all living entities, na na cha, also, aham, ai. Desu in them, avastitaha, situated. Baimi, translation, translation by Prabhupada, Prabhupada Ki Jai. Baimi, in my unmanifested form, this entire universe is pervaded. All beings are in me, but I am not in them, purport. Shall I read, Mathaji?
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
The supreme personality of Godhead is not perceivable, perceivable through the gross material senses. It is, it is said, Mathaji, you can read, Mathaji. One point two, the Lord Shri Krishna's name, fame, pastimes, etcetera, cannot be understood by material senses. Only, only, only to one who is engaged in pure devotional service and the proper guidance is key revealed. In the Brahma Samita five point thirty-eight, it is stated. One can see the supreme personality of God who is in the always within himself and outside himself. If no, if one has developed the transcendental loving attitude towards the him, thus for people in general, he is not visible. Here it is said that although he is all pervading, everywhere present, he is not conceivable by the material senses. And this is indicated here by the word abhye tmu tina. But actually, although we can, we cannot see him, everything is resting in him. As we have discussed in the seventh chapter, the entire material cosmic manifestation is only a combination of. Of his two different energies, the superior spiritual energy and the inferior. Material energy, but just as this sun, sunshine is spread. And all over the universe, the energy of the Lord is spread all over the creation, everything is resting in that energy.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, we will ask, Roshanu Kanya Mathaji to read the last paragraph and the next verse. And then we will ask Sindhu Mathaji to read the next one, we will end probably with this verse today, yeah, go ahead, Roshanu Kanya Mathaji, thank you, Karpa Gavli Mathaji. Yet one should not conclude that. Hare Krishna, yeah.
Because he is spread if all over, he has lost his personal existence to refute such an argument. Lord says, I am everywhere and everything is in me, but still I am alone. For example, a king had a government which is, which is but the manifestation of the king's energy. The different governmental department are nothing but the energies of the king. And each department is resting, resting on the king's power, power. But still, one cannot expect the king to be present in every department personally, that is a crude examples. Example, and. Crude example, similarly, all the manifestation that we see and everything that exists. Both in the material world and in the spiritual world are resting on the energy of the supreme personality of Godhead. The creation takes place by the diffusion of his different energies. And as stated in the Bhagavad Gita, Vis, Bhagavad Gita, vista, vista bhya. Krishna, he is everywhere, everywhere present by the personal representation, the diffusion of his different energies.
Yeah, Hare Krishna, so, so very beautifully, like Prabhupada makes in another verse. Yeah, Hare Krishna. So, so very beautifully, like Prabhupada makes in another verse, sutre gana mana maneva. Right? How Krishna is the thread and all the, all the planets, all the material universes, Brahmani, Brahmi, Dekona, right? There's so many universes, all of them are strung on the, on the thread, on that invisible thread, which actually maintains all of the universes, right? The thread is never seen, right? In a, in a, in a nice, you know, pearl, pearl chain, right? We see the pearls very beautifully shining, but nobody actually sees the thread that is actually holding all these pearls together. That is actually giving the beauty to that particular chain, isn't it? So similarly, the Lord is actually maintaining all of these universes. The universes are performing perfectly well, the sun is rising at the same time, every morning, the sun is setting in the evening. The moon is rising, the moon is setting, you know, then there is nighttime, then the early, early morning, again the sun is rising, perfect. A tuning, everything is happening, there is no dashing of the planets, you know, so many planets are there in the solar system and how everything works. It's, it's completely beyond our understanding, right? Because in roads, we get traffic jam, you know, we get, we feel, we, we know that so many accidents happen, newspaper we open, so many accidents have happened like that. We never see that such accidents are happening in the, in the space, right? Why? Because they are effectively governed under the direction of the Supreme Personality of Godhead, isn't it? So in this way, the Lord is doing all of the work, but yet the Lord is invisibly, the Lord is invisible in the entire scheme of things. Hmm, the Lord is not, the Lord is not, you know, coming out and telling, I am only doing everything, right? The Lord is very quietly doing everything, the Lord is the maintainer. However, his energies do all the work, right? Also, we, we give the example of the CEO of the company, he is not day, everyday present in the company to do all the activities. But everything happens under the supervision of the CEO, he is appointed as managing director, the other directors for each function, you have the, then you have the each function heads, right? They all manage, but everything ultimately is under the supervision of the Supreme Personality of Godhead like that. Okay, text number five. Uh, Rashamanukanya Madhaji, are you still there? Yeah, go ahead, text number five, nachamastani bhutaani. Are you there? Yeah.
Nachamastani bhutaani, pashyamay yogam, yogam ayishvaram. Bhuta prunna cha bhuta stho mama atma bhuta bhavanaha, synonyms, na, nevar, cha also. Matstani, situated in me, bhutaani, all creation, pashya, just see, me, my. Yo, yogam al, alsvaram.
Yogam Ayishvaram.
Yogam Ayishvaram, in, inconvenable, mystic power. Hmm, bhuta, prata, bhuta prata, the maintainer of all entities, all living entities, na, nevar, cha also. Bhutashta, in the cosmic manifestation, mama, my, ah, atma, self, bhuta, bhuta bhavanaha. As the source of all manifestation, translation. And yet everything that is created does not rest in me, behold my music, my mystic opulence. Although I am the maintainer of all living entities and although I am everywhere, I am not a part of this cosmic manifestation. For myself is the very source of creation, perkut. The Lord says, everything is resting on him.
Sindhu Madhaji, you need to, okay, fine, okay, read it.
The Lord says that. Hare Krishna, Madhaji. May I continue?
Yes, Madhaji, go ahead.
The Lord says that everything is resting on him, matstani sarva bhutaani. This should, this should not be misunderstood, the Lord is not directly concerned with the manifest, manifest, sorry, maintenance and susta, sustenance of this material manifestation. Sometimes we see a picture of Atlas holding the globe on his shoulder, he seems to be very tired. Holding this great earthly planet, such an image should not be entertained in connection with Krishna's of holding this creative universe. He says that although everything is resting on him, he is aloof, he is aloof. The planetary system are floating in space and this space is the energy of the Supreme Lord. But he is different from space, he is differently situated, situated. Therefore, the Lord says, although they are situated on my inconceivable energy. As the Supreme Personality of Godhead, I am aloof, I am aloof from them. This is the inconceivable opulence of the Lord. In the Nirukti Vedic Dictionary, it is said, uh. Yujyate nena. Ruk. Madhaji, please.
Yujyate anena durgateshu karyeshu.
And the Supreme Lord is performing inconceivable, wonderful pastime, displaying his energy. His person is full of different potent energies and his determination is itself a chill fact. In this way, the personality of Godhead is to be understood. We may think of doing something, but there are so many impediments. And the, and sometimes it is not possible to do as we like. But when Krishna wants to, to do something simply by his willing, everything is performed so perfectly that one cannot imagine how it is being done. The Lord explains this fact, although he is the maintainer and sustainer of the entire material manifestation. He does not touch these material manifestations simply by its, by his supreme will. Everything is created, everything is sustained, everything is maintained and everything is annihilated. Uh, there is no difference between his mind himself, as there is the difference between ourselves and our present material mind. Because he is absolute spirit simultaneously, the Lord is present in everything. Yet the common man cannot understood how he is also present personally. He is different from this material manifestation, yet everything is resting on him. This is explained here as yogam ayishvaram, the mystic power of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. Hare Krishna, then perkut.
Yeah, pashyam, pashyam yogam ayishvaram, look at me, they look at my opulence like that. So this is what we discussed in great length, right? Like the pearls are strong on the thread. Krishna is actually maintaining all of the universes and in this way Krishna is the, is the, is the, is the, is the root. Hmm, why, why all of these things are working properly, okay? Last verse for today, let's hear it from Sindhu Madhaji, text number six, go ahead Madhaji.
Hare Krishna, Madhaji.
Hare Krishna.
Text six.
Yeah. Yata akasha stitho nityam.
Takaarsha stitho nityam, vaayu sarvatra gomahaan, tata sarvani bhutaani, matstani, matstani, upadhara ya. Synonyms, yata, just as, akasha stitha, situated in the sky. Nityam always, vaayu wind, sarvatra gah blowing everywhere, mahant great, tata similarly, sarvani bhutaani, all created beings. Matstani situated in me, iti tas upadhara ya, try to understand. Translation by Divine Grace Shilapropas, Shilapropas Kijay. Understand that as the mighty wind blowing everywhere rests always in the sky, all created beings rest in me. You continue, Madhaji, popo.
Yeah, go ahead.
For the ordinary person, popo by Divine Grace Shilapropas, Shilapropas Kijay. For the ordinary person, it is almost inconceivable how the huge material creation is resting in him. But the Lord is giving an example which may help us to understand. The sky may be the biggest manifestation we can conceive and in that sky, the wind or air is the biggest manifestation in the cosmic world. The movement of the air influences the movements of everything. But although the wind is great, it is still situated within the sky, the wind is not beyond the sky. Similarly, all the wonderful cosmic manifestations are existing by the Supreme Will of the God and all of them are subordinate to the Supreme Will. As we generally say, not a blade of grass moves without the will, will of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. Thus, everything is moving under his will, by his will, everything is being annihilated. Still he is aloof from everything as the sky is always aloof from the activities of the wind. The Upanishad, it is stated, yet, yet bishava taha pavati. It is out of the fear of the Supreme Lord that the wind is blowing, taitri, taitriya, Upanishad two point eight point one. In the Brihad Aranyaka Upanishad three point eight point nine, it is stated, etasyava aksharasya prashashane karki surya chandramasav vidratav, tautish tataha. By the Supreme Order, under the superintendence of the Supreme Personality of Godhead, the moon, the sun and the other great planets are moving. Brahma Samita five point fifty-two also, it is stated, yachakshur esha savita sakalagrahana, rajasamasta suramurti rasheshateja. Yes, yes, yajnaya, brahmati, champrata, kalachro, gobindam, adi, purusham, ambajami. This is a description of the movement of the sun. It is said that the sun is considered to be one of the eyes of the Supreme Lord and it has immense potency to diffuse heat and light. Still it is moving in its prescribed orbit by the order in the Supreme Will of Govinda. So from the Vedic literature, we can find evidence that this material manifestation which appears to us to be very wonderful and great, is under the complete control of the Supreme Personality of Godhead. This will be further explained in the later verses of this chapter.
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. Okay. So, so I was just saying that the very wonderful point in this particular, last three verses talking about the same thing. When we desire to do something, we are only, we can only try, right? That, that's why we cannot confidently say that I will do this, we cannot say that, we can only, what can we say? Okay, I will try to do it, right? If the grace of the Lord is there, then we would may, we may end up doing it. But if the grace of the Lord is not there and we are not supposed to do, then we may try, but we may not be able to complete the task. But for the Lord, it is not like that, right? When the Lord wills only, the activity is already done because the prakriti and everybody else, right? Um, are, are so ready to perform what the Lord wants them to do, right? And the Lord by his own energies, right? He's already complete, the minute he desires, right? The action is already done and then he only gives you opportunity to all of his devotees to do that particular activity, right? Otherwise, the Lord is perfectly capable of doing everything himself. Yet he gives the opportunity to others so that they can do that activity and get the glory, right? Krishna tells Arjuna also that, um, nimittam aktram bhavasabhiyas rachin, become my instrument and kill all the soldiers and the opposite army, but I have already killed them, they are already dead. But you are only going to do it, to do it physically, right? The action is already done. So in this way, the Lord does everything, yet the Lord wants to give credit to his devotees to accomplish certain tasks so that the Lord can glorify them and the devotees can glorify them. So this is the beautiful nature of the Lord, he is the all-powerful, he is the supreme enjoyer, he is the supreme proprietor. He is the supreme enjoyer, he is the supreme CEO. Yet he gives opportunities for all of us to do some work for him and in this way, we also progress in our devotional service. So with this, we will, we will end our today's session, we'll continue tomorrow with, from text number seven. Granth Raj Shrimad Bhagavat Gita Ki Jay, Devat Roshni Prabhupada Ki Jay, devotees who are being patient enough, sitting about twenty minutes extra, can switch on your cameras also, we'll do a two-minute Haryanam Sankirtan and then we will see who are all there. Who have been patiently tolerating the extension of time and then we will quickly end our session. In case devotees have any queries or realizations, can also raise your hand. Namah om, vishnopa naya, vishnapishkaya bhuta re, shrimate bhakti re, randa. Swaminiti namine, namaste, sarasvatadeve, gauravani prachari. Ne viseshashunnavadi, paschatyadishadari. Raya Shri Krishna, chaitanya, prabho nityaranda. Iyadvaita, gada, gada, shiva sad, gora bhakta benda, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hari Hari, Hare Ram, Hari Ram, Ram Ram, Hari Hari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hari Hari. Hari Ram, Hari Ram, Ram Ram, Hari Hari. Hari Krishna, Hari Krishna, Krishna Krishna, Hari Hari, Hare Ram, Hari Ram, Ram Ram. Hari Hari, Govinda Jaya Jaya, Gopala Jaya Jaya, Radha, Ramana Hari Govinda. Jaya Jaya, Gaurangita Jaya Jaya, Jaya Jagannath Jaya Baladeevam. Jaya Subhadra Jaya, Tudasana Jaya Balagopala, Jaya Radha, Shama Sundar Jaya, Radha Madha Jaya Radha. Rasihari Radha Madhan Mohan Radha, Govinda Radha Gopina Jaya Radhe, 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 Jaya Radhe, Radhe Jaya. Preetade Jaya Guru Parampara, Jaya Shatgooswami, Jaya Prabhu Paraja Jaya, Mudhu Devani, Jaya Radibol. Hari Bon, Hari Bon, Hari Bon. Alivadita Bhavana Hari Ram Samsirtan Ki Jay, Hare Krishna Mahamantara Ki Jay, Samveda Vakvande Ki Jay. Achakalpada Rupiyas Shagra Pasindo Bhiyeva Chavati Tanam Bhavan Ebyo, Vaishnav Ebyo, Mohnamana Dukhuri Vishnum Avrind Ki Jay, Shilapropas Shilagurdev Ki. Jay, Hari Bon, so I can see Shobha Madhaji, Shita Prabhu, Harjit Madhaji, Rajneesh Prabhu, uh, Rohini Madhaji, Sneha Prabha Madhaji, Sindhu Madhaji, Rashamanukanya Madhaji, Karpa Gavali Madhaji. Dilakshmi Priya Madhaji, Anusha Madhaji, very wonderful. Thank you all so much for joining in and staying till the end of the session. We are almost half an hour over time, thank you for tolerating me. All right, so thank you very much, I can see two hands up, Shobha Madhaji, you have something to say?
Hare Krishna Madhaji, sorry to tell you, what is the time in your clock, sir?
Two five.
Yeah, and definitely Thursday, Friday, we have C C class at two o'clock, Madhaji. One fifty-four, it will be used to be late, but they don't mistake, Madhaji.
Yeah, 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 no problem, sorry, sorry for, no, you can feel free, like if you want to extend, feel free to log out, it's okay. You can catch up in the YouTube sessions, ah, that's, please feel free to log out. I know, I know today we've actually gone ahead by half an hour, so please feel free to log out, no issues. Yes, Deva Madhaji, anything from you?
Uh, Hare Krishna Madhaji, yes, Madhaji, a small question that of Narad Munni, he became a pure devotee by serving the Acharyas. What about his mother, like even she was serving them, so what was her destination? I just wanted to ask that.
Yeah, so the same destination of that Dhruva Maharaj, right? Dhruva Maharaj, he, he was actually, his mother actually told him that, you know, you want a kingdom greater than your, uh, you know, greatest of the grandfathers, greater than the Brah also. And then when Dhruva Maharaj got the Vaikunta, right? The Vaikunta plane was waiting for Dhruva Maharaj and Dhruva Maharaj asked, what about my mother? And you know, the Vishnu Duttas told, your mother is already going up, right? So you are following your mother, so you know, the Pratimapradarsika Guru, right? His mother actually engaged him in devotional service in the first place. So whatever destination the son got, the mother would have got a better destination, if not the same destination, okay, Madhaji?
Thank you.
Although it is specifically mentioned, to my knowledge, it is not specifically mentioned, but from the, from the other pastimes, we can arrive at what could be the destination of Narada the boy's mother, yeah.
Thank you, Madhaji, Hare Krishna, then perkut.
Thank you. Granth Raj Shrimad Bhagavat Gita Ki Jay, Jagat Dhruva Shilapropas Shilagurdev Ki Jay, Anandhuri Vishnum Avrind Ki Jay, God Bremenakde, Hari Hari Bon.